Let's go ahead and call the meeting to be ordered.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get right to it. Looking for approval of our minutes from last meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. HS1, resolution, reappointing members to the Child Protection Advisory Council. Anne Marie Mueller and Mary Margaret Pico. Look for, is there a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are we gonna have a representative from?
Yes, Mary Margaret will be here about 2:30.
Okay. Alright, HS2. Resolution authorizing social services department budgetary mod, including creation of one position and deletion of one position. No problem. Skip the one, skip, I skipped one. The computer purchase for Medicaid staff. Rule 15,232. Uh, did you want to, yeah, why don't you probably go ahead, Jim, you move it, any second?
Second.
Stacy, did you wanna say anything about that?
Um, somehow we were into a practice of our inventory with used equipment going to Medicaid. We're gonna reverse that strategy because Medicaid, we actually had 100% reimbursement of equipment. So now Medicaid will have new computers and when they depreciate to zero but still have life left in it, we'll pass them on to those programs where we don't get 100% reimbursement.
Sorry.
Sure.
I wanna make sure I heard that right. So we were passing hand-me-down computers to a department that would receive 100% federal funding?
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay, and now we're gonna reverse that practice as far as, because we can get pretty nice computers on Sony if we're getting reimbursed.
Mm-hmm.
See if you can make that right.
Not all of our departments.
Well, that's crazy that we're doing that.
Veronica, did you?
Not, not all of our departments allow us to buy equipment. So that was probably a little bit of the issue, but when it was brought up, the Medicaid staff had defunct computers. I wasn't really aware of the practice and stuff, yeah.
Now, you know, there's a good example as we get our fiscal staff and our program staff really married up and working together. Here's what that results in.
We actually have one.
This is one of many, many examples Veronica and I could give you about how we have been able to maximize federal and state funding by shifting things around when we have the program side of the house and the fiscal side of the house working man to man.
So we're gonna get rid of some of the common doors that are still working.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised.
So, you know, I'm being very vulnerable by telling you, you know, that we had, you know, something on my ship that was not good. But you need to know that, you know, when you're not having that kind of communication between the two. We did this, this, this came up at the same time it came up that we get 100% reimbursement for a titled position that we didn't have a title on, which was staff development coordinator, which was approved last time. So these are again, some things as we fine tune, we're, we're finally getting kind of to the point where we've got, you know, we're fine tuning some of these things.
Do you have a question? For vote, call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Now let's get to, I was just so excited to get to this. Creation of one position, deletion of one position. Just wanna speak to that. Stacy or?
Would you like to start or do you want me to start? Go for it. We're just looking to have a senior accountant put into the DSS accounting unit. There's a lot of work being done right now between myself and the accounting supervisor that really belongs under a different title, especially the stuff that the accounting supervisor is doing. And when I went through all the titles that were available, the, because the work that's being done most closely fit to a senior accountant, that's how that decision was arrived, yeah.
So you don't have all the documents that we shared with Bill and the drawer, but basically what Veronica and her team have done is they have gone through every single duty in accounting. They looked at where those accounting duties are placed in their org chart by position and then looked at, put all those positions side by side and analyzed where do those position descrip, where do those duties belong? The first part was we had some really high level duties that take a lot of skill and they were, they had been over the years delegated down to clerk positions, account clerk positions. And Veronica was finding thousands of dollars worth of mistakes. Do you wanna talk about quality assurance with this in the air?
Well, I currently, right now reconcile all of the claims that we do and on a daily basis, I spend a majority of my time looking for the errors because, and I've said this to Stacy, I can teach people to put the round peg in the round hole, but I can't teach them how to recognize what happens when the peg is square. They, they get how to do their job, they just don't know why they're doing what they're doing and that's, I feel a detriment to the county because I'm spending a lot of time every month having to have them redo their work at my instruction because I'm finding those errors. And it's a lot of extra work that shouldn't be necessary, but it is. When I first came on board, we, in this, years and years and years ago, when there was a big layoff in the county, they eliminated quite a few positions and those positions just never got restored. And so it's been a long time that they were handed down like that. And then finally, when I started to analyze it, I realized that, you know, there's a good reason why you don't have account clerks and senior account clerks doing work that brings millions of dollars into the county. It can be detrimental and it needs a higher level. And right now, I just don't have anybody that has the time to do what should be being done by the accounting supervisor and isn't being done by the accounting supervisor and hasn't been for 15 years.
Part of it is this civil service stuff, right? You know, with clerks, you have to have a high school diploma and maybe you've been able to be a cashier at a store, dash out, reconcile your drawer. And so those clerks rise up from the account clerk, senior account clerk, principal account clerk. But the basic skill sets early on is different from the accountant line up the civil service. So, you know, if you think, well, you know, there's Veronica accountant, there's Cheryl an accountant. They are, if we look at the position descriptions, you know, they're not CPAs, although CPAs don't even have to have a college degree, I just found that out.
You gotta make it through the program.
You just gotta make it through, yeah. But, you know, we really only have two in the DSS realm and then one, Bill Martin is.
Senior accountant.
Senior accountant. So we have one and he oversees all the employment and training, which are separate budgets, separate accounting.
So, the way it looked to me is that there was, it was a cascading set of events where we have people that are working out of their A grade essentially, or their job description. And then, which meant that the people below them are working out of their job description, which put the first people below them working out of their job description and this can set that straight.
Right.
And the other piece was that the, the actual, what's left in the budget mod, the 7448, is gonna be covered in your vacancy this year?
Yes, but the heads up, like, you know, again, being very transparent, the heads up is that next, this summer, when we're working on budgets together, there's gonna be an additional $7,500 basically in local share added to our overall costs.
Next year in the budget.
Yes. So you're making a decision that will impact the 2020 budget.
Is there more questions? Go ahead.
I think what I'm hearing you saying, because I kinda went through this, as manager of accounts payable for Penn Traffic. And after the first year, I actually hired CPA to be the floor manager because the work kept going to my desk and the things that I should've been doing, I wasn't doing. Do you see that as, in the long run, being a cost savings? Because you're no longer spending that time doing that, instead you're getting new grants and doing other things.
Right, and, and being able to analyze things like the Medicaid equipment purchase and discovering, because I'm looking into all that now, that there's also the same program with HEAT. And so we may be coming back again to get more equipment through the HEAT program because we can get 100%. But because I'm so busy helping the staff constantly because they can't, it's, it's not that they can't do it, they do it, I, I give them a lot of credit. But what they're doing is so beyond that they can't do it without my hands-on guidance with them and so I'm not able to look out at the bigger picture.
So are you doing a significant amount of paybacks or any of all at this time?
No, I'm actually recapturing my money for the county in most times. Most of the time, the error is, is actually against, would be against the county. I'm finding errors where.
That's what I mean, you're not doing paybacks to the programs.
No, never.
Actually, Martha, I don't wanna say money.
Yeah, I'm usually recapturing.
This is about maximizing reimbursement.
Absolutely.
And this particular position is almost a 75% reimbursement, is that correct?
Yes.
So do you expect that to be even a greater amount that you capture once this is done?
I believe it will give me the ability to better take time to analyze things. I, believe me, I'm analyzing them now and I'm recapturing, but sometimes when an error is made, I know there's an error because I can tell from the way the numbers look, but it takes me two days to figure it out. You know, and so I, I feel like I need to be able to have the time to look at that bigger picture and also the, the accounting supervisor position should be doing the RF2A claim, which is our most complicated claim, but that job is so overwhelmed with other work that it's not at that level. It's at a level below it.
Anecdotally, I can say, that $7,500, we're gonna get back if everyone's say, you know, just, how can we prove that though? It's numbers, I mean, I'm sure we can dig down deep enough and show you, but that, any kind, you get a.
It's almost like a $7,500 insurance policy in my.
No, she just told, gave her more work, now she's gotta prove this.
It, you know, any kind of forensic analysis you get into, you know, she'd be out of her days. But anecdotally, I can tell you, that's a small number compared to the loss if we don't set stamp and that's right.
And that's what I was looking for.
Yeah. Because, you know, at some point Veronica won't be there. We, we need to set this up so that it's sustainable over the decades, not just right now.
Fred?
How about the programs you're using, the programs, the applications, NMS?
Getting better.
What effect has it been, has that been helping out or are we, are we drifting, are we getting better?
You know, the, the NMS program itself, in, in my opinion, has always been beneficial. It, it just is, it's a huge learning curve, but, and everything changed, everything we do changed, but we've gotten used to that. I think though, in the bigger picture, what you guys all don't know and can't know is that not only did we go to a new purchasing program and a new financial system in the county, which strongly affected my team, but the state is changing a system that has been in place for 30 years at the same time. And on top of that, we also have, you know, some changeovers going on with the servers at DSS. So just to give you an idea, on Monday, we lost an entire program out of the system after we had done all the work and it was the first of the month. We are still trying to recover the work. The software company is trying to help us recover the work, but my team for three days now has been just trying to recover the work and it's been.
You lost the program and the data.
All the data.
You know, there's a hand, there's five, six systems that we feed information into in our financials. So it's not just the NMS.
Other questions?
Complex.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is the four.
I appreciate your support, folks.
Okay. Go ahead, Jamie.
Good afternoon, everybody. So for veterans servicing, the next month, there will be two proclamations coming through. One for the Leighton Elementary School for putting on their November program that they put on for Veterans Day. And then one that's gonna come through from the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. May is Military Appreciation Month. March 12th, the agency participated in Kew Community Colleges Wellness Fair. That went off really well. The students come through, they get a post, it's like a postcard and they have a bunch of blocks that get filled out, so they go to different stations. We, they learn about, I think social services was there, health was there. So they learn about different services offered by the, by the county. We're continuing to digitize documents, so we have two more empty filing cabinets, which is a huge improvement. Again, we started with over 20, so we're continuing to get rid of the paper. Things going on in, in Congress and the legislature. Blue Water Navy can now apply for presumptive illnesses for Vietnam veterans before they couldn't. So if, let's say, if a sailor was in Vietnam and they were only on a ship, they never stepped foot in Vietnam, they couldn't apply for presumptive illness disabilities, they can now do that. So we've seen a huge influx of new claims due to that. There's also four new illnesses that are looking to add to that list. There's 90 days on the clock for those to be decided. And if any one of those four get approved, we're going to be extremely busy. And they're also going to apply NEMER law, so if they've already came in and applied for them and they had been denied, then the VA would have to backdate them and payment to their, to their original claim date. What this means for the county is we actually produce revenue, even though we don't count it as revenue, but for all of the amount of money that we bring in to the benefits, it's spent in our county. So there's now opportunity again for veterans to claim far more in terms of disability through the VA. And that's all I have for veterans.
Thanks, and we have to cut out, feel free to, to do so.
Thank you.
Sure. We're still looking for the veteran of the year, so at the end of May is when that is due. And you know how many we've gotten so far?
I have six and five of them are for the same person.
I've been working this out, have to on subcommittees and the fire advisory board, so if you can, please disseminate that because we're looking to get as many in as possible.
Is the news really split up?
It has been. I think we're just gonna revisit that when we get a little closer, especially with next month being Military Appreciation Month and being the month of their due, we'll probably make a big push for that.
So they're all, five of them for you?
Better put it by the same person.
Sorry. Okay, Sarah.
Okay, I wanted to start off by saying the state budget that was passed, it included the $15 million for unmet senior needs. So I wanna thank Human Services Committee and the legislature for the support of the resolution that went in with all the counties joining together and putting the support in. I'm sure that had a big impact on keeping that money in the budget. I know there's a lot of things in there that might not be so great, but we're very happy that that money is in there. We maintain a waitlist of approximately 35 seniors that are looking for senior home care in home care. So that money that we'll receive will be able to go towards getting more clients in home care that they need. As long as there's an aid to provide that, and that's the other issue across the stage is there's not home aids available to go into the home. So we'll cross that bridge. When we get there, we're just happy to still be getting some additional funding for our seniors. So thank you. Also, May is Older Americans Month and the state each year asks us to supply names or nominate senior volunteers and we received four nominations. We sent on two, you can send names, send two nominations on to the state. And Vernon Triumph and Ella Cooper, their names were sent on. We'll recognize them on a county level, but the state, their, their names are in the state lottery now to see if they get New York State Elder of the Year as well. But as part of that, they'll be invited to Aldini for a luncheon on May 21st. I'm going to put in a formal request that each May, we do have a proclamation that says Older Americans Month and we usually recognize our senior that we choose, so I'll put the formal. Add on to Jamie's two proclamations, add one or two from the office for the aging as well. I'll bring that to May meeting. We have registered dietitian that, there's two of them, one our contractor, Addison, one the office for the aging contracts with. She's said she wants to be done, so we did have an RFP go out through on a dogging purchasing and we received one response at over double what we currently pay. And it's an employment service, it's not per state person, so I put some feelers out to see if there's maybe someone that might be interested. The RFP's gonna go back out again, expand the scope a little bit. And Mary Kay has decided that she'll go continue on month to month until we get someone to fill the position because that is required. We need a required seven hours per week from her in order to meet the nutrition regulations for our meals program. We're also in the process of organizing our second senior picnic. This year, it'll be a little earlier in the year because last year's in August was extremely hot. We were hoping to do it in May, Older Americans Month, but we're afraid that, you know, with the weather here, it might not be warm enough, dry enough for our seniors and conducive to safely having it. So we're gonna, it's gonna be June 26th and it'll be at Brightback Park. They have donated, we don't have a fee to utilize the area, but that's where it will be. We're in the process of looking into performers and what food we'll have. And more information will come as we get closer to this, as things start getting hammered out. Also, working on the longest day event, June 21st is the longest day, the Summer Solstice. It's a day that's recognized by the Alzheimer's Association to recognize Alzheimer's disease. Those people who are suffering from it, the caregivers that are caring for the, their loved ones. We are going to have a walk again around the bridges. It'll be instead of the June 21st, it'll be June 20th because that's when Farmer's Market is and we had a great turnout last year. Elizabeth in our office is organizing it and I'll give you more literature on that as we get closer to it. If you want to come walk the bridges or just come to photo booth that I have there. But really it's to bring awareness to Alzheimer's disease. Our friendly caller program, almost 100%, will start next week to start making first calls to people in the community. So if you do know someone who's isolated or lonely, you don't have to be isolated, they could just be lonely. They could be living in a senior building, but you loan them. You know, refer them to our office and we'll connect them with a volunteer that'll give them a, you know, weekly, monthly, whatever they choose, a call just to, to say, hey, what's going on? And just a friendly call. And so, like I said, if you know of anybody, refer them to our office or make a referral yourself and we'll try to get them in on the calling schedule. We have six volunteers right now, only four people signed up, so we do have volunteers available, so they won't be on the waitlist waiting for a call. And finally, our handyman program with City OSIs, we've come to a roadblock there. City requires a contract, it cannot sign a contract with the homeowner. So they requested to sign a contract with the office for the aging. And county attorney looked it over and he said that, no, we shouldn't be signing a contract. I've tried revising the language in the contract. So it'd be something that would be beneficial or to the county or not, not beneficial to the county. We just have not come to a place where we can move forward. City cannot, as part of their program, they cannot go do anything more until they have some contract in place.
How did it work in the past? Or did it work in the past or is this new?
Well, the first program that we had, the city construction trades just did it. When administration within city found that they did this and they said, you can't just do that, you need to have some sort of agreement. An agreement cannot be with the homeowner because as part of their school legal side of things, they cannot contract with a homeowner. If they did that, then it has to go up to RFP. And RFPs are such a small amount for the little work, they're like, they're, they can't do that. Which I agree with them that this whole project was for, or program started because these jobs are so small, they can't get a contractor in to do the work because it's not beneficial for the contractor going to do these small little jobs. So I just wanna let you know, if you want to lend your support to me in the office for the aging and to, to continue working with a county attorney on that, it's right now, we're kind of, the book is closed on it. We did reach out to Arise and. We did reach out to Arise as they work with persons with disabilities to see. And their executive director, Tony Anderson, said that maybe they could be kind of a middleman. But basically, the middleman then would be putting all the liability on Arise, and she's like, we can't do that. I'm like, I agree with you. I can see where you're coming from.
So what's the contract for?
It's basically saying that they can go onsite to do the work. That the homeowner's agreeing, that the students are coming on, that it's a learning experience, that they're allowing them to come onsite to do that work.
It sounds like it's less a contract than it is an indemnification. I mean, it's not a contract to accomplish work. It's a contract to be able to be there.
Some of the concerns that the county attorney brought forward is, well, is there anyone checking the title to the home that these people actually own the home? Who is getting the building permits if a building permit is required?
I love lawyers.
Is it meaning zoning requirements? If a dumpster is needed, who is securing the dumpster? If the utilities need to be hauled in, who is making sure everything is being done? So those were some of his concerns. And if mom and dad, if son and daughter think that maybe mom and dad aren't capable of making that decision and the home is modified in some way, are they gonna come back and say, how could you do this to mom and dad's home? So those were some of the concerns that were brought up that could come back where the county, and then it comes back on the county. Because it's not a funded program. It's not a NISOPA funded program. It's not a federally funded program. It's just a program that we tried to work together to get some smaller cares done where it's no cost to the county. The homeowners were purchasing the materials themselves, so it's almost like a referral program.
Can't we just refer it to the kids and let them go with their parents and do it? Just be neighborly?
That would be lovely.
Okay. We'll keep rolling. I don't know what else we can say about that.
I'm gonna reach out to OCO as well, because a lot of the people that were on the list are home-delivered meals clients. Because part of it was, you know, maybe they need a new hambrill, maybe they need some new scare tread so that the volunteer can get easily in and out of the house without being injured. So I'm gonna see, maybe if OCO would want to maybe step in at some, if we maybe need to get with them as well.
Last question on that.
Yeah, sure.
What's the largest scope project that those teams were handling at the peak of the program?
The one year that they did it, they put any threshold in. The homeowner purchased like a $300 threshold. They're like, no, 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 and they built something for them so they could bring that back and get reimbursed for it. They did some painting of a porch, put some new trim on the outside on the deck. For this, we kind of scaled back a little bit, and we said that we can't do anything in the home. Because some of the homes were smoky and you didn't want students being in there. And really, nothing overhead, so no roof repairs. Really, what was on the list to be accomplished for this were some decks to be painted, some stairs to be repaired. Really, that was it. The majority of it was painting.
I mean, I would just say before you completely slam the door closed, I mean, I see where the county attorney's coming out. It's his job to look at liability and things like that, so I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily fault him for that. But there should be a way, either that comes from us as legislators in our separate districts, I mean, to work with. I'm just, I only know the city of Asuio, right, what you need permits for there, but there's no reason that, you know, with the city of Asuio, that we couldn't go to code office or go to the mayor there and say, hey, listen, come with Ryan's special exemptions for the program, so they don't need to go and worry about that. A lot of these things doesn't sound like they're gonna need a permit for. It just seems like, everything that the county attorney listed off to you, it doesn't seem like we're utilizing any of that anyway, right? There's no dumpsters. There's no need for permits a lot of the times. I get some of the liability stuff, but there, I don't know, I'm gonna have to think on it, see if there's ways to be able to get creative. Permitting shouldn't be a barrier for this, right? There should be an ability for us to go back and work with other electeds to say, listen, this is.
Well, and again, they're not signing the contract to actually accomplish the work. The contract is to protect everybody. It's an indemnification. It's a way to just, you know, have everybody be safe from getting sued.
I gotta think on it.
Yes, because it's something that can be so helpful and something so small, but there could be some serious ramifications if someone weren't happy with whatever it's being done, I guess.
Is that okay? Do you have anything else, or?
That was my last item.
Okay.
Oh, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Sure.
As you guys are doing the senior picnic at the Brightback Park?
Yes.
Was there any fee charged to you guys for using the building or things like that?
They waived the fee for us, yes.
That was gonna be my question. Thanks.
Did you have a time for them? Yeah, or you don't know?
It's on the 26th, it'll probably be 10 to 2. And we're gonna actually reached out to Brian, and we're hoping that, because it's the 26th, I know it's the end of the school year, it's a half a school day, I believe. But maybe we can get some high school students to come volunteer to help set up, break down, if there's any musicians, maybe they can play a little music. I don't know. We reached out though to see if there's some assistance where they can come with us. We're also playing bongo. Maybe they can be the, you know, the bongo reps or something, so.
Okay.
Brian, turn it up. All right, I'll cover things rather quickly. I gave you a copy of my directors report, which is for a board meeting next week. And I thought that's just gonna cover all the information I didn't have. Updating you a little bit, the youth leadership summit next month, I was just seeing this ago, is drawing by the day. We're starting to run into a good problem, which is capacity issues, that we do have all-night districts on board. And with the map of the size of the facility at SUNY, you can only have so many students, but you're having the districts wanting to bring entire eighth grade classes. So we're trying to get through that, which is, I guess, a good problem right now, and how to figure out how to accommodate for that. We were able to ask our last presenter that PTEC will be on board in the, what we call the roundtable trade show piece of it. But they're not going to be a presenter on the other session based upon the fact that when we moved the event from March to May, one of the only negative pieces to that is PTEC's pretty much picked their class by May, so it's not really, it's beneficial for them to recruit at the event. But that's, that was understood as we did it to move forward. But that being said, that workforce development, last week, we had a presentation from New York State Agriculture Education and FFA, which they are a statewide organization which teaches our youth agricultural skills and talks about working within the field. And Asuio County currently does not have that within here right now, so this is a good opportunity for them to be able to get in front of all-night school districts as well as the eighth grade classes they're recruiting going into high schools, that this could be beneficial for them. So with that being said, I've been in communication with the local rep from Peeta County, and they are going to be sending the state officers, which are youth throughout New York State, to present that day, as well as legislator Wilbur and legislator Delcante are both going to be a part of the presentation as well. So that should be a good event. Right now, we're at over 700 students looking to attend. I mean, you add in the public safety from City and the vision class, and you're taking to play all the presenters and the staffing that day. You're looking at close to 800 people who will be on board. Well, if you ask them, you'll probably do the welcome that day when the time comes, if you're available to do so.
Do you just, okay, May 21st?
May 21st starts at 9:00 o'clock at SUNY, so I got. As we go through the couple of things that I just wanted to highlight to you, I started to write for Sarah to look at that. Our mini-grants are currently out there for the, we're able to provide mini-grants roughly $1,000 for nonprofit agencies who are going to do out-of-school activities with youth. But if you're involving them, working with the seniors and you're creative, we can talk about that. There's a potential way that we could assist to help with that maybe. That program alone serves thousands of kids out of school time. We look at the youth development skills to go along with that. Again, criteria that we put forth is to focus on that out-of-school time in a lot of agencies, such as my friend Mary Margaret over there, who doesn't want to hear me advertise, apply for funding to work with the kids out of school as well. March 21st, we had our Asuio County Anti-Bullying Coalition. That was collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, Youth Bureau, DA's office, and a bunch of other groups probation. We had 50 kids come to the city, and we talked about situations that happen currently within schools. It was hands-off for adults to really be talking during the event. It was really, new justice resolutions facilitated it. It was youth communicating to basically tell us where they feel safe and where they don't feel safe within their schools, and what can we do to be prepared for any potential challenges down the road. We will be meeting again next week to get back together to talk about the results from the day. I know that, again, other groups and the county attorney was involved in it, office, the district attorney was involved. So it was a good turnout for the day. A lot of great information was gathered, a lot of interesting information. And the collaboration of kids that we had from all areas and all districts really worked well together. So there was an article in the paper, I think, yesterday about it, but it was a really, really good event. My staff is finally back to full strength, and hearing, you know, Stacy and Veronica talk, I definitely, you know, hear for you when you have to have other staff filling in for other people or doing other people's job. It really takes away from what you're doing. So I agree with you 100% that that's, I think, to be done. The budget, going off of what Sarah had said, again, I agree the budget was a challenge, but for the Youth Bureau, it was good. We got our add-on money put back on, which normally, as I've said, you know, it fell in such every year that when I budget, I usually don't budget that add-on money in because you can never be sure whether that's gonna be there, but we've had it the last seven or eight years added on. We got that additional funding put into our budget, which for Asuio County comes back to be about between $15,000 to $18,000, which we do put into that mini-grant program. So when you think of that, that can serve roughly, you know, 15 to 20 mini-grants that gives outside agencies the availability to do programming that they don't currently have budgeted and produce. So that usually serves in the thousands of youth every year. It's anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 additional youth we serve with that money. So it does go a long way. As I was telling Roy before too, we had another $250,000 put into our budget that when I went into Albany this year, because I'm on the executive committee for the association, that I get to participate in a lot of the meetings with the governor's office to that matter. And what was really truly eye-opening this year was that OCFS had made a decision that after 37 years, they're gonna take all their training funding that they've given to the Association of New York State Youth Bureaus and put it into in-house training, which I think they do with you guys, with the SS as well, with U of Albany or whatever. In the legislature and the governor's office, if you saw their faces when they said that, it was just their chins dropped. They just, and they immediately put that $250,000 back into a line item. They didn't agree with the decision at all. Because it's really events such as the leadership forum that you'll see that I wrote up about and that I go to Albany every year, and I bring our young people, and they like to have that opportunity to talk to the young people, to find out what's happening out there, what's working. So it's different activities and trainings that are out there that we were able to work with. The state may, did put that money additionally in for this year, so that was beneficial. And the last thing I think I covered on there was that infrastructure update next month, me as well, I guess we'll have a little busier time. I don't have a proclamation to bring on, but with the work that's happening at Camp Serby, we'll have some potential bids coming in for the new well and septic that are going in. That I gave you the timeline that's in there, and I believe tomorrow's the bids are due, so looking to award the bids in May. So I'll be bringing those forward to look for movement on that. The timeline is to have that done from what the engineers have told us, that once they start work, the goal is to have it done by the end of June. So the impact on what we have happening at Serby should hopefully be minimal. The rents will start usually in May out there, but the contractor, well, the engineer has that schedule. And as of right now, they're just signing weekends, so being built into the language has the when they can work and can't work, and all the safety precautions needed. So aside from that, the other thing I was gonna say is like, with Camp House right now, we are, I think, at about 84% full of staffing hires. Zach's been a really good job with bringing his experience with running facilities in Buffalo area. Couple of notes that people like Phil might be able to associate well that Moleskine's come back with new this year. So this will be year 37 for Moleskine, I think, to be at Camp House. And we, this is our 73rd year, so I'm, I'm just everybody. So for next month's meeting, Jim Flibbe is gonna come in, if you guys will have, if he wants to talk to you briefly about our 75th anniversary of Camp Houses in two years. And Jim is currently writing another book about Camp House. He originally wrote a book a couple of years ago. He does, he doesn't like to admit to it though, so he doesn't like that book. So he's writing a detailed book now as to Camp House, and he's working hard to put a museum together. And he's collecting items from history of there. So Jim has asked if he can come in and briefly just speak to you a little bit about it.
Is he gonna be able to do the whole book briefly?
Probably not, because that's, you know. So that will happen in May or June, I think, the schedule.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, just quickly, Greg, the new camp, new day camp hours, they're, is that the first year we're doing this?
Yes.
That's an awesome program. So for, we're landing $25 extra dollars a week. We extended it out to where they can be dropped off at 7:00 AM, not picked up till 6:00, so it'll come in.
So with that, that also gets some practice in kind of the.
Yeah, it's awesome. That's awesome. Did we have to bring on any additional staff to do that? That's just so.
What we have is for the day camp program, we have, we have two AmeriCorps members on it. So what Zach wants to do between his staff and the AmeriCorps thing, somebody will start at 7:00 AM shift, and somebody will come in till like 10:00. So that'll work. That person will. So it'll still work the same hours, but the person who comes in at 10:00 will work 10 to 7:00, and it'll try some like 7:00 to whatever.
I think it's great. I mean, Mary Margaret can tell you too, of course, with like the CLIO summer program, any type, anytime we can offer, you know, supervision of children. I don't know how much daycare costs and things like that. You know, CLIO does it for free in the summer, and they get a meal and something like this, if they're able to do that. You know, you're utilized during the summer. It's good to see.
Our day camp number is already peaked, or already hot, I mean, from what's coming in, they're already growing from last year to space. We don't know if it's from that alone, but they're already growing, so.
That's cool. That's good stuff.
Would it, would it be beneficial if we had a special meeting to accept your bids right before our legislature meeting?
Does that work? I don't know what the new, this is my first bid since purchasing changed.
Well, would it speed up the work?
It may be able to speed up the work. It would be beneficial if the bids are in and ready, because they may be able, there are some weddings and things that are booked and other events, getting the septic in. If they can start earlier, I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, so then I think we should, if you, if the bids look good and we're ready, they can be ready, then let's plan on doing that.
I went to the pre-bid. They do, when they come onsite to do the tour of the place and get everybody out there. No shows, but purchasing wasn't too alarmed by that, because he said, you know, the label is laid, it's out, it's a pretty simple job. It's not indoors, so, I mean, there's no building, so it's really no walkthrough, so he wasn't discouraged by that as much as I was like, oh, he showed up.
Okay. I would just say with that, Mr. Shamrin, you know, if possible, depending on the special meeting schedule for that, we can block off. We usually do those in 15 minutes, right? This sounds like a conversation that might take maybe a little bit longer.
Well, I mean, all we're doing is accepting, he's got the money. The money is all from grant money.
Okay, so we're not accepting the conversation for a long time.
I, I mean, while it'd be our conversation, we can try to make sure everybody has information ahead of time.
I'd be great.
All right, this is all covered. Go ahead, Rich.
There's also DASD money attached to this, so they wanna, they wanna see us expend the money in a certain timeframe. It's a drilled well and a new septic, so.
Yeah, I think we, we will. So we'll plan on doing that and credit the, get the information out as quick as we can.
Okay. I'm very pleased to have the vice chair of the Child Protection Advisory Committee Council here. Our chair, Jerry Gatner, is at a conference. I believe regarding, yes, in Vegas. I believe regarding children's issues, child water issues, but this month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. There will be a proclamation next week, and some of our staff will be coming dressed in blue. I think blue is the color for, you'll also see some pinwheel gardens going up around the county through the month of April. So our partners will be out, hopefully planting gardens of pinwheels. So our partners will be out hopefully planting gardens of pinwheels.
Might need to do some repairs to the one on 481.
Yeah, yeah.
There were two or three of you cartwheeling.
Yeah, we got a planted garden yet at TSS. We're waiting for the one on ladder. They were planting those this morning on my way into work, so. And with that, I'm going to turn it over. Does everyone know? I mean, you got our bio.
You're ready to refer.
You were reappointed to the committee today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So typically CPAC has presented to this committee a couple, you know, every year about the child abuse and the recurrence. And we usually bring a lot of statistics, which I think we all are familiar with, the numbers and the concern that we have in the county. And right now, we thought with Child Abuse Prevention Month, we'd do a little bit, something a little different. So thank you for squeezing us in here. And how, is about two minutes of video that really just talks about the effects that the stress of abuse and stuff has on children's, on their physical wellbeing. Not on the actual abuse piece, but on their, you know, their stress and how stress affects children and their development. So we thought this would kind of really show that.
You're right. That was short.
That was really.
Is there a firewall on YouTube? Is there any way around there?
That must be my fill right out of the room.
Well, I'm going to improvise though.
That's a drag because it's really, really good.
So I will try to improvise and speak to trying to.
County wants to discourage employees from watching committee meetings.
There's some irony in that.
Hang on a second.
Tell us where it's at. We'll all watch it on our smartphone.
Or you can try and just go to YouTube directly and look for it.
I don't know if I can make it with. Love it on the way. I hope so.
Do you?
I went in on my son here and he would know how to take it right off his phone and put it on the TV and everybody would be fine.
Yeah, we need one of those kids here, Brian.
Well, but if it's blocked, we're using all, we're, oh, you could do it right off the phone.
Yeah.
Because I'm on the same.
It's blocking it, okay. Try is what you can do from a phone onto a TV.
So for the Center on Developing Childhood Harvard University, they have this whole guide here on toxic stress.
Well, and that's also known as ACES, right? Adverse childhood experiences.
Yeah, this survey, yeah. There's a lot on brain development and brain science that they're calling it right now with regards to the effects, looking at the trauma that the child has gone through and the effects of it. And basically, hopefully we'll get to see it, the video really just shows how anyone under any kind of stress, you know, your heart rate increases, your blood starts kind of going a little bit faster, that kind of physical issues happen. And when a young child is getting stressed, if they're crying, just in normal circumstances, obviously you see they're crying, they're excited and things kind of get revved up. But then a parent or caretaker obviously can come in and soothe that and kind of decrease that. And some stress we all know is good because that's how you learn to cope with it. But the kids that are living in the situations that we're talking about with the abuse and neglect, they're always at that level. So instead of getting that comfort to kind of regulate themselves, they're always up here. And how that then affects them the rest of their life. One of the things that talks about.
We overrule the YouTube block? Pardon? We overrule the YouTube blocking? She was going to show a video.
No, it won't show.
It's a firewall.
I'm going to give a call. Is there were fancy ones? Try and get that done or not?
Yeah, she did. Well, go ahead. You were doing a great job.
No, 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 you can see it because they can do a little better than I do. But they also talk about the brain synapses, you know, the nerve endings in your brain and how those are developing when children are young, like zero to like three and everything's developing. And when that stress hits, some of those connections die, basically. And how can we repair those and move forward? Because once it gets to the point, they're older, it's obviously more difficult. So really talks about the stress that on their body and what can we do to help offset that stress? And a lot of the, that's kind of what the video talks about. And then at the end, I just wanted to talk, there is a piece about how you prevent that and how you help obviously kids with that. Because even though they're living in those situations, having some adult, having the services that we provide.
Yeah, you can keep going. I'm going to just sign out and then we have to redo everything.
Oh, that would look, we can hopefully repair some of that. They can explain it better.
I'm blocked. You know, I'm crazy.
What they're, my understanding is what they're finding is that it's, this stress is cumulative.